Good evening, and thank you all for waiting this evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council meeting order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no between justice for all.
If we could have the roll, please.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Yeah.
Alderman Sevenik.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding the proposed City of Manassas budget for 2020. Director Jacobs, did you want to just quickly go through in general what the budget is this year and what that may mean to an average homeowner? Typically, we've -- I didn't give you a heads up ahead of time, but I know you have the public notice, so.
Correct. I mean, I've got a little PowerPoint, too. I don't know if you want to do that when we get to the resolutions a little bit later.
That's probably fine at the resolution point.
Do then, okay. Tonight, what we've got is that there is a annual city budget for not just the general fund, but for all of the city department funds excluding the Manassas utilities. This does include a resolution for the property tax levy, which will be adopted by the council tonight, subject to any adjustments they would like to make first. And it also does include a separate resolution for the borrowing, to set the borrowing for 2020 at this point. Now, just because that, as I know I've mentioned with a couple of the Aldermen in the last week or two, that the borrowing amount that's set by the resolution tonight does not mean that that is the locked amount in that the city will borrow for. As has been the tradition here for the City of Manassas, you have gone ahead and borrowed typically at the end of the year, so you let the projects occur, you let the contracts come, and all the building projects and street projects and parks and things come before the council first for approval, before we end up borrowing for all the projects at the year end. So that's typically what you've done. So if there are other adjustments to different projects that might come up, what you're doing is approving the appropriation level tonight, and that would be in the grand total amount for all funds included of $49,620,376, which does include a tax levy amount for all funds, setting the levy at $10,261,613. And we've got it broken out into three different resolutions, where there's a resolution which has the spending authority for all the different funds.
Director Jacobs, could you just compare this year's levy to last year's levy, this year's borrowing to last year's borrowing?
Sure. The levy amount for this proposed budget for 2020 is $1 lower than the budget levy amount for the previous year. And with our reassessment this year included, our proposed tax rate for Winnebago County portion is dropping from $10.89 down to $9.68, which is a $1.21 reduction, which is about 11% reduction. And in Calumet County side, the rate last year for the assessed rate was for the city was $11.04, and that will drop down to $9.52, which is a $1.52 reduction, which is about a 13.76% reduction. The reason that the two don't move in the same direction at the exact same dollar amount is that each portion of the county is assessed, and the state will end up assigning equalized a full market value that could be at a different percentage than what the city's assessor has it. So what we have for after the revaluation was done this calendar year in 2019 is that the equalized valuation for Calumet County is about 1.5% lower than our assessed valuation is, and it's in the reverse for Winnebago County. The full market value right now that the state says is about 1% or half a percent higher than our assessed valuation. So going forward in time, the assessed valuation will go up slightly a little bit for the assessment in Winnebago County. Calumet County might stay a little bit more firm until they're closer to 100%.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak regarding the 2020 budget at this point? Okay, we'll call the public hearing to a close, and we have the report of department heads, staff, and consultants. We have the minutes and communications to receive this evening. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we receive minutes A through E and communications F through H.
There's a motion, a second discussion. Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to receive the handout that was just given to us.
We can't receive something that's not on the agenda.
First of all, I would like to take up item F, and Chief Stecker provided us with the Manassas crime report, and certainly we've got some great numbers here under reported crime. Aggravated assault, down 4%. Robbery, down 50%. Berklery, down 18%. Theft, down 17%. And vehicle theft, down 48%. This is no doubt from great policing in our community, and certainly from a department that has an accretive rating that we received last year from the state. Only 45 departments have that, so great job in the policing work in our city this year. The other next item I wanted to address here was the railroad crossing, and I appreciate Adam Alex, our Director of Public Works, putting this in our packet. And many of us have complaints about Racine Street, Appleton Street, DePur Street, railroad crossings in our city. And for over a year, this council's been, and the mayor's, and Department of Public Works Director's been trying to correct this problem. And when it comes to railroads, they don't answer their phones, they don't listen to you. But attached here tonight is a copy of the investigation that the Office of Commissioner Railroads responded to our petition. And we have requested that the commissioner investigate the condition of the public-grade crossings, as I just mentioned. And it appears that sometime towards the end of the year, there'll be a hearing on it, and then after that, 15 days after that, there'll be a final decision by the railroad commissioner. So this has been in the public, it's been on the social media out there. A lot of people complained to us about these railroad crossings. Last week, we had Wisconsin Department of Transportation Racine Street Bridge screening, and we were directing this back to the state, and I did ask the council that, I dug up this document that is in our budget here tonight, that we take an extra week here before we send everything into the Department of Transportation. And it was sent forward from the council. My no vote was that we hold off just two weeks until we get the input from the public and bring our new Department of Public Works Director up to speed on this project. So I talked to Adam Alex here tonight, and he has some information for us to show us. And Adam, could you do that?
So after our last meeting, I did have a meeting scheduled with the DOT, Bill Bertrand, and in light of Alderman Taylor's concerns with the screening, as you can see there in regards to the roundabout, and with not having been involved with any of the stakeholder meetings and whatnot, I did ask in regards to it. And talking with Bill, there's two Bills involved in this. Bill Bertrand from the DOT indicated to me that at the stakeholder meetings, there was some concern in regards to headlights, and in response to that, his recollection was that the skew of the bridge was changed in order to, as you're coming across the bridge, one of the designs had the bridge sort of heading straight north and then veering to the left. They did change that in light of the concerns that were raised. In addition, then Alderman Taylor and I had talked a little bit, and I was concerned, as we had talked two weeks ago, about knowing that there is an incline where the bridge ties in with Main Street and Racine Street there. And as far as screening, we knew that we had some vegetation, some trees, plantings to help sort of create this landscape buffer and screen any headlight glare or whatnot. So I did reach out to both the head engineer as well from AECOM, his name is Bill as well. He and I did talk just today, as a matter of fact, and did point out that in addition to changing the skew of the bridge, that they did also increase the green space, and that's why they did that on the northeast quadrant there. And then, as we continue to talk about, I pulled out the plans, and as you can see from the diagram there, that's one, two, and three is sort of like three vehicles, and the first one's on an incline, just kind of giving the idea that what Bill had indicated to me is that that's one of the reasons why they put those showing the shade trees, or probably will generally be evergreens of some sort of sort year-round to help provide some screening for headlights that may be for the cars entering into and exiting the roundabout. So vehicle number one is an incline, and then it flattens out, and as you can see, once they get into that flat section, it's going to, the headlights will be up the river for the most part, and then she starts to decline, providing that your headlights are not on brights, they should be on dims, they should be pointing down anyways as you come down off of that decline. And then the one thing that I noticed when Bill and I had talked about that is that that center grouping of trees or shrubs or whatnot can be shifted to the south a little bit to provide additional protection there. And there again, we as the city has told the DOT that we are going to do the tree plantings because at this point in time, any of those improvements were going to come out of our aesthetics budget, and obviously, if we do it ourselves, it's quite a bit cheaper. So they are confident that they did respond to the concerns that were raised and that they did address those concerns. And again, I think that based on what I'd heard as far as, again, how the incline declined, I think that we'll be able to provide adequate screening along that edge of the green space there and the Headwaters condos.
Thank you, Director Alex. The Headwater Condo Association has been attending these meetings since 2015, and I just wanted to keep them abreast on what was happening here before we sent it off to the state of Wisconsin. And that's what we accomplished here tonight by having them here, showing them what's going on, and if they would like to make their comment. Thank you.
Alderman Sevenik?
To the general public that is here, just so you know, the majority of this council was opposed to the roundabout period. It was a former, past council that voted to go this route. We fought it hard, Alderman Taylor fought it hard, and we didn't win that battle. But I will say that business was concluded two weeks ago. I read you the minutes from before, and you did hear that we were going to, as a city, do everything possible to block any lights from shining into the property. That's why we are taking control of the landscaping and that. So hopefully, you weren't told that things were going to be terrible over there and all that, because that's not the case, and that we're doing our job here. And I thank you very much for coming to the meeting. We don't get this that often, and it really shows that you care, and I appreciate that.
I do have one.
Right, yeah, right after this, there's a spot that everyone can speak, so you'll be allowed to speak at that point.
Yeah, and then Mayor, Alderman Taylor wanted to put this into the minutes, but they can appear as a communication in our next.
Yes.
So we will take this letter, it will appear in our next meeting, and it will be on record.
The purpose of this wonderful explanation tonight by Director Alex was to show you exactly what to expect, and if that doesn't happen, well, we'll be back here sometime in a couple of years. So that's all it was, to keep you up and informed since you're the neighbor that's most impacted by this, 12 neighbors in the association. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Item F is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Now you have your opportunity. If you could come to the microphone, please, and if I could get your name and address for the record.
Sure. I'm Sandra Inselman. I'm an owner resident of the said Headwaters Condo Association, and my unit is the closest to the roundabout and the staging area and everything. But I would like to say thank you to whoever was in charge of our street renewal, rebuilding, and whatever, because they redid the apron in front of one of the driveways that I've been fighting for nine years. It's been a pond, and so I used the other driveway instead of that, but now it's clear. And I just wanted to say thank you to whoever did that, decided it, implemented it, and it's good. Thank you.
Another member of your condo association had alerted us to that a few years back, and with the upgrading of the road, we were able to fix that for you, so.
Yeah, well, we weren't sure until it actually came about that we were not going to have to pay for it, so.
That is one of the benefits, we pay for roads as part of your taxes.
That was, that was good.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
I just have a question.
But I need you to come up by the mic so that we can hear you.
Oh, well, Headwaters, as you know, P. M. Greeceback, and I, too, applaud the street and all that's going on in Manassas. We're going in the right direction. I do have a question on that plan that was featured there. The transition between the green space and the headwaters, it's quite an elevation difference. Is that being considered in that plan?
And we can take a look at that, too, and make sure. We can't really have a question and answer here.
Okay.
But if you guys would like to stop by, could make an appointment, and Adam and I and you could sit down and take a look at it again, too.
Sure, sure, because that is something to be planned for, because there is quite a difference. But anyway, we want to work with you, and Bill Garvin is our president, and contact us, and, you know, we're expecting really good things. Thanks.
Thank you. Got one more person. Looks like you wanted to come, too. No. It looks like you were trying to stand up and get up.
Sorry.
Oh, no, I have nothing to do with that. Larry Konetsky, live at 222 Lake Street here in Manassas. I'm the president of the Manassas Athletic Association, more commonly known as the Manassas Maxx, and, you know, the baseball team. I'm here this evening, I talked with Brian, or I should email Brian and Alderman Ted Grotty a little bit about some of the renovations out at Coslo Park, the dugouts in particular. And I talked to, we had a Mac meeting, and I'd like to give a check for $1,000 to the City of Manassas for those renovations to the dugouts out at Coslo Park, which are to be done in 2020, according to Brian, and before the season starts and everything. If we like to work with the park department and the park committee with Ted and Brian to upgrade other things out at the ballpark in the future, so that's what I'm here for, so I give happy news.
Well, thank you, we appreciate it, and Brian would be happy to accept your money.
Thank you very much, and thanks for everything you're doing out at the ballpark. Hopefully, we had a good year this year, just to recite, we didn't, well, our streak of six consecutive league championships ended, but we did repeat as the state Class A champions for the second year in a row, so the guys are representing the organization and the city quite well, so thank you very much.
One more question for you.
Yep.
Where'd you get the sweatshirt? It's great.
Cold, cold blue Jays.
Thanks, Larry. Okay, seeing no one else from the public, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have six items this evening. The minutes to approve from the Common Council on November 4th, and the budget review sessions on November 6th, 7th, and the minutes from the 13th just say that the meeting was canceled. The Administration Committee recommendations from November 4th to accept the Wisconsin Department of Transportation's offer to purchase Riverside Park for $33,500. The Board of Public Works recommendations from November 4th for the street use application for First Eve. The Plan Commission recommendations from November 5th for the second addition to Southfield Final Playa. And to accept the Wisconsin DOT offer to purchase Riverside Park for $33,500. Is there any most items that anyone would like separated this evening? Alderman Nichols?
Item one, please.
Any other items? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Item three, and I'm hoping I got the right, no, I don't. Let me see your agenda here. Where are we here?
That would, if you do number three, you would also do six.
And item six, yeah. Thank you.
Do we have a motion for the remaining items?
Someone else is going to have to do it, because my agenda is so mixed up here. I got three agendas stuck in one. Someone else, would you please take that?
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of items two, four, and five.
There's a motion, a second. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried and roll call eight zero.
Item one is the Common Council minutes from November 4th. Alderman Taylor?
Oh, I'm sorry, I handed on for it.
Okay.
What, when are you on, Mayor?
Item one.
I think Becky's probably going to.
You've held a Common Council minutes, so you need someone else to, oh, she's, her light's on.
Her light was on as well.
I'll move for the approval of the Common Council minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Alderman Ted Grotty, and Alderman Nichols, did you have?
Yes, I'm not sure if it's an amendment or just a correction, and I'm sorry I did not call you. It's okay. Clerk Galiati today. On page three, about a third of the way down, where there was a motion to amend to 2.5%, the first group of Alderman, Alderman Taylor and Repella should be recorded as voted no.
No.
Wait, okay, then one group needs to be recorded as no.
Right.
Oh.
Ted, Alderman Grotty's got.
Okay.
Okay.
So I see what you're doing.
So, and then there's two more like that right below.
There were two, all of them are yeses, and they should, one.
Okay.
Yes, so apologize for that. That's just a correction, yes.
Okay.
Just a correction?
So we're going to correct the motion for the 2.25% wage increase.
Yes.
With Alderman Taylor and Repella voting yes, the others voting no. The 2.3 wage increase with Alderman Taylor and Repella yes, the others no. And the 3% wage increase, Alderman Taylor and Repella voting no, and the others yes.
Thank you.
Correct, okay.
Those will be corrected.
And, yeah, we can just approve it.
Yes, correct.
As corrected. You found it? Alderman Sevenik?
It's in the same area, and I was thinking about this. There was a lot that had to be, that was said during this, and I stated my reasons because I was happy with the fact that the staff had taken the time to pay more in their health insurance, and also get together and look for a plan, and blah, blah, blah. But also, but then, when a department head says something, it's quoted, and I just have, and I don't know how correct this quote was, because Alderman Taylor brought in some information that was giving the U.S. Department of Labor's costs, and then his statements weren't put in there, but then John Jacobs' statements about, he explained that the wage increase for the representative police and fire employees, he explained the U.S. Department of Labor compensation cost for state and local government employees, the amount of 3% increase is below the U.S. Department of Labor compensation cost.
If you'd like, we could just remove that sentence.
I would say remove it, because I don't believe it, and then Alderman Taylor had brought up some information about his, I believe it was compensation for, was it, what was it, James? Was it Social Security? And it was less, and that's not in there, so I'm just.
Did you want to just make a motion?
I don't want things to have to be very verbatim.
Do you just want to make a motion to remove that sentence, Stan?
If you could, that would be fine.
So there's a motion to amend to remove the sentence, he explained U.S. Department of Labor. There's a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now we're approving.
Two sentences.
Okay, sorry, two sentences? Is there two, is there a period? There is a period in there.
We know.
Now, we're, we have a motion to approve as corrected and as amended. Any further discussion? I waited too long.
Sorry, Mayor. Thank you. I noticed that we're going to give the non-representative, non-represented employees the 3% pay raise. One thing I'd like to get the council's views on was.
This is just the minutes, we.
Oh, we can't do nothing?
No.
Okay.
We already made, yep, this is just approving the minutes from the last council.
Okay, we can't change anything.
We're not talking policy, no.
Oh, sorry. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried and roll call eight zero.
Item three is to accept the Wisconsin DOT's offer to purchase Riverside River View Park. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of items three and six to accept the Wisconsin Department of Transportation's offer to purchase River View Park for $33,500, with the funds to be placed in the Park Development Fund for future park and green space acquisition. And this was recommended by the Administration Committee and the Plan Commission.
She's doing both three and six. There's a motion, a second. Sure, Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. The $33,500, it's actually coming out of taxes we paid to the state anyway, so we're kind of paying for it in a roundabout way as well. But Adam, was there any way that we could have held out for more money?
We did get more.
I mean, like $50,000 or something.
Perhaps, but perhaps, I'll just say that. It's my understanding at some point that they will make a qualifying offer. If negotiations don't come to an amount that we agree upon, then at some point, they will make a qualifying offer and more or less tell us that's what they're going to pay us, and then they'll, and then it's up to us that add a later. us that at a later date after they've acquired the land, and then we can try and, I guess, take it to a.
An arbitrator?
Of some sort like that, yes.
Yeah, I was gonna hold out for like 11 million, but just a tit for tat. So, all right. Thank you.
Alderman Sevigny.
Randy, they could have probably also taken it with eminent domain, I would think. So, then we would have gotten nothing.
Okay.
Okay, so. But I hate to see this little pocket park go. I'm, I agree with Alderman Taylor. It's a, it's a little gem in Manassia. But the thing is, is with the new bridge, there's the other side now. So, basically, we would be shifting that pocket park from one side, the bridge in the middle, to the other side. So, I would hope that we would not just put the money only into the park, the future park fund, but that we would concentrate those dollars on the roundabout, the area that we were discussing earlier, and the new pocket park.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. As I address the administration committee, I thought the property comparables, as stated, they were not a good representation of the comparisons to the River View Park property. And I still think park property with this view on the waterfront, a lot of city lots are 20, 25, 26,000, and out of the new subdivisions, they're 30 some thousand. So, I don't feel that the, we really did get the money for this property, especially like Alderman Sevigny said, if, if we want, this is gonna be shifted, and then we should have, $30,000 doesn't go far when you wanna do something with another piece of property. And I agree with Alderman Repella. I think maybe we should have went down the road of not accepting this offer and see where the cards fall for us. But I, I think it definitely probably was worth three times that amount. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried out, roll call seven one.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for November 7th through 14th. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the approval of the accounts payable and payroll for the term of November 7th through November 14th in the amount of $716,783.93.
Did you get that second, Debbie? I think there were three of them at once. Alderman Tom Grady?
Was it Ted?
Oh, Alderman Ted Grady. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried out, roll call eight zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I move for the approval of the beverage operators license applications for the 2019 through 2021 licensing period as presented in the clerk's memo dated November 14th, 2019.
So, motion, a second by Alderman Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Carry down, roll call eight zero.
Item three is regarding the national prescription opiate litigation, and I'm going to have attorney captain explain what this is before we take a motion on it.
We are being asked whether or not we want to be considered part of a negotiation class, which means a, well, this is not a class action lawsuit. It's something that is not done very often. It's just so happens they had to kind of go outside the lines and figure out how they wanted to deal with the thousands of cases that are pending in the federal court system, suing a number of drug manufacturers, opiate drug manufacturers. I'm trying to think of who else is in on it, but it's all related to opiate drugs. And all of the cities, counties in the United States will be considered part of this negotiation class unless they opt out. And if they opt out, that means that they want to do things on their own. And so, as I mentioned, because there are thousands of lawsuits across the United States, the defendants in these multiple cases want to know, you know, who's in, who's out. If they reach some kind of a negotiation in this class, then they would know what their potential total exposure on damages could be. So, that's what we are being asked to decide, is if we want to stay in the negotiation class. I did look through who is part of that negotiation class. Milwaukee County, as I recall, is the only community in the state of Wisconsin, but they are part of that negotiation class. What I provided to you was questions and answers that are available on the opioids negotiation class website. And I also provided you what has been prepared as a possible allocation map, which shows possibly what could be the amount that if there was some kind of a settlement that was decided and approved, what would be the allocation for Winnebago County, for Calumet County, and then ultimately to the city of Manassia. If you have questions, I will try to answer them, hopefully in a nutshell. You know, there are a lot of costs associated with opioids in the various communities throughout the United States. And so, you know, they're, because of those costs and all of the deaths and education and police and healthcare, et cetera, that's what the lawsuits are concerning because it's alleged that the manufacturers and whatnot distributors knew that it was highly addictive and didn't, you know, release that information soon enough.
Alderman Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and attorney. I don't know if this is better asked of Nancy, the question, if we opt out or opt in or whatever, does this affect any type of grants or any monies that are available out there? If all of a sudden we say, hey, we're gonna do this, oh, now you're not eligible for all these, these type of grants. Guess that's, I don't know if you had time to look at that.
I have not been made aware of that, but I can certainly check.
I don't know if, Captain, if you know of anything?
Yeah, that, that would not affect it. The monies, if there were a settlement, there would be funds and that would be going to the counties, which really, the bulk of the expenses, so to speak, in the state of Wisconsin technically really came from the counties. And so, they are, would be receiving an allocation as well. There's multiple factors that went into the allocations. Milwaukee County, like I mentioned, is one of the parties that did help with determining what that allocation is, but it wouldn't affect any, anything that we currently get.
All right, thank you.
Did you also want to comment on what the costs are depending on which direction we would go?
Sure. If we are part of that negotiation class and we stay in it, if there happens to be a settlement, we would take part in receiving a portion of that settlement. Alternatively, if we remove ourself as part of that negotiation class, we would be on our own, or we'd have to find some other communities perhaps that are interested in having a, starting a lawsuit. I know that there are a number of communities already in Wisconsin that are involved in lawsuits, and I don't know what they have decided to do if they're opting in or out.
Alderman Sevigny?
I'm concerned with allocation. You're saying allocation would be made to the county? And are they, have they taken this vote?
What you are looking at is a, just an example of an allocation map.
What if Winnebago County doesn't, but we chose tonight to do it?
Pardon me?
What would happen if Winnebago County didn't take some kind of action and we did?
Then the share here for Winnebago County is 184,477.
Yeah.
Presumably then that would be divided up between those community, cities that are located within Winnebago County.
Well, that's my question. Why, why should, I mean, if we vote yes or no, it looks like if Winnebago County gets it, they're gonna allocate it to all these municipalities. So, I'm confused. I mean, unless, unless you opt in, then you should be the only municipality that should be granted. But the way you've stated it made it sound as though everybody gets in regardless because they're in the county.
Everyone's in unless they opt out.
Unless they opt out. But do you have to, so tonight we're, we're deciding if we want to opt out and.
Correct.
That's it, and not necessarily opt in?
Correct, because we are in. We are in.
Okay, gotcha.
And every city and every county in the whole United States is in it. It's only if they want to opt out and go out on their own.
Alderman Kruger?
Oh, I'm sorry. My question was exactly what Alderman Sevigny's was. I should turn off my light, sorry.
Made it easy, right? So, what is the pleasure of the council then at this point? Even if we're, even if we're staying in, it probably would make sense that we took action this evening just to make it clear that that's what we wanted to do. If we want to opt out, that's fine as well. Alderman Kruger?
I'll make the motion that the city of Manassia stays part of the negotiation class and the re-national prescription opioid litigation.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Nichols. Alderman Sevigny?
Sorry.
Oh, okay. You did. Yeah, I just wanted to wait until you were done. So, seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried out, roll call eight zero.
Item K is ordinances and resolutions. The first item on the agenda is Resolution 24. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of Resolution 2419, a resolution for a continued commitment of a municipal wide energy management policy introduced by Mayor Merkison, recommended by the administration committee.
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried out, roll call eight zero.
Item two is Resolution 25. It is a resolution for levying taxes for the purpose of paying the operating expenses for the year 2020 operating budget. And Director Jacobs has a presentation that we held off on during the workshop meeting before this, so we'll start out with that, and then we'll move forward with further questions.
Thank you. I just wanted a couple summary slides here, just to recap the budget process at the very end. There are also two things that Alderman Nichols had asked about, which I will cover in Slides two and three. As I had mentioned previously already, this is the historical rates for the budgets and for the tax rates for the city of Manassia for, if you live in Winnebago County versus Calumet County. The line at the very bottom in gold is what is proposed for the rate of Winnebago County at $9.68, and for Calumet County, $9.52. The next slide shows, this is one of the questions that Alderman Nichols had asked, is about the annual expenditure restraint program. For the city to be able to maintain and stay in the program each year, we need to stay under a spending threshold level that is dictated from the Department of Revenue. It's, part of it is based on your net new construction, your new growth in the community, plus a portion of it's for inflation. And so, I've got the last three years up there. You can see the last three years. We were two years ago at 3.7 percent increase. Last year was 3 percent, and now for the 2020 budget was at 2 and a half percent. So, that was our maximum number to hit, to stay below, to stay in the program. And the numbers in the blue shaded column there, the current, the third, the first line in blue, we on the far right-hand side, the current budget year expenditure restraint number that we had a standard was $18,648,867. And that is made up of the general fund and any other funds that have a levy amount. So, that we actually came in at a number of $18,499.94. So, that instead of a 2 percent, or 2 and a half percent maximum increase, we were only at a 1.63 percent increase, which means that we are underspending the limit by $157,873. The reason I bring that up is because for any adjustments that are reflect, made tonight, we either raise or lower that amount. And also thinking ahead that if there are any adjustments or carryforwards next April or any time during 2020, that will make this, there is room here to add things in either tonight or in, during the year, next year. So, as long as the budget does not go up another $157,000, we will qualify for the expenditure restraint program, which gives us several hundred thousand dollars of additional monies we get from the state each year. And then the other question that Alderman Nichols had brought up is the levy, the tax levy limit. Here in Wisconsin, municipalities are also required to stay under a taxing levy limit increase each year. There are several exceptions that can come into play, but just if you look at the numbers, very straightforward, that our levy limit amount for the December 2019 levy that we'd be setting tonight, the maximum amount was $10,408,614, which would have been an increase of $78,403. What we're proposing tonight is an amount of $10,261,613, which is actually a $1 decrease instead of an increase. What this means is that if the numbers do not change, if the proposed number stays as is, you. you will be under the levy amount by 78,403. And what that also does mean, there is opportunity in future years, the state does allow you to have a carryforward of unused levy for up to five years. So you go back five historical years and those numbers will carry forward until you get to the sixth year and it drops off. So what I'm bringing to your attention for tonight is that if we do not touch the levy for tonight, you will have to be able to carry forward into next year's budget, to next December. You will have the 78,403 unused from the 2019 levy. We have 45,660 from last year that was unused. That will carry forward. Then the remaining years of 2015, 16, and 17's levies, there was no carryforward. You must have used the full amount. Sure.
Carried over, where are you carrying it over to? The general fund? Or go ahead.
Yeah, the state allows you to carry forward the levy limits so that you can go, it can be applied to any fund. It's just the general taxes that you're collecting. Can be applied to debt service, could be for recycling, could be for any fund.
Okay, yeah, because you aren't being specific of the carryover.
Sure.
So for example, this year we could have increased the 78,000 plus the 45,000 plus the 186,000, should we have wanted to.
You could have done that. Now, what will happen for this, this year is the fifth year for that levy from December 2014. So for next year, that 186,150 will fall off, that will drop off. But you still have the two that I have marked in green. So going forward, you still, at budget year this time next year, you still will have 124,063 available that you can use above the levy limit there of whatever the amount is next year. So why don't you bring it to your attention?
Stan, did you have another question?
Okay, and then the last thing I think that, just the general discussion, just, just to remind you on the debt limit, the general obligation debt. You can see the last three years there from 2017, 2019, we were as high as a couple of years ago, 31,008. Now, at the end of 2019, we're at 28,005, which is a 47.74% debt limit. You were as high a few years ago of closer to 75 to 80%. So it's falling and can use, continues to fall. Now, with the budget that we've got proposed for tonight with the additional borrowing proposed, for, at the end of 2020, we're estimated that number will continue to fall to about 26 million, 26.5 million dollars. That would be without the four borrowing, the four developer projects or the interim bank loan garage, which I'll get to in a second. If you were to add in the developer projects, which they will be paying for through special assessments or payments to the city, that number would go up to 29,298,825. So it would be a little bit of an increase from the 28.5, but this is not something that the levy will end up paying for. They will be paying for it through special assessments. However, I, there's no way for me to know at this point to predict how much we will tap into that 18-month period of time during the construction of the new public works facility. So that amount will be considered general obligation debt up until the point that it gets refinanced, which our projection right now is January of 2022. And then that would become USDA loan. And then whatever that amount we borrowed from the bank will end up not becoming GO debt limit. It'll flip over to lease revenue bonds. So it's a whole different classification, but it won't be counted here. So for right now, I just kind of left it out. But just to let you know that we're going in a positive direction. And then I wanted to remind you again of the steam plant debt, which is going in a positive direction also. The line I highlighted there was from last year. That in the far right-hand column, the ending balance right now, a year ago, was 11,008. It will, at the end of this calendar year, it's dropping to 10.7 million. At the end of 2020, dropped to 9.5. You can kind of see it will have a free fall. So most of that debt for the steam plant debt will be paid off by 2027, when it has only a balance of a little under a million dollars. And by 20, then to 2020, 2030, it will be paid off 100%. So it's going in a positive direction. And there is possibility of possibly doing some refinancing with the state trust fund loan. I've talked with the mayor already. The interest rates on that, some of that debt, we could get about a half a percent lower. That would speed up the process or we can more ease the debt burden going forward. But there's some potential there. And then the last slide I wanted to leave with you is that this you've seen before a year ago, when the mayor and I and Sam was kind of involved in this discussion. Strategically, a year ago, we had decreased the budget, the tax rate about a penny when we closed TIF three. Now with the 2020 budget, we've closed TIF five. That provided a tax reduction about 12 cents. And that's before we consider the reassessment that occurred this year. Going forward for the 2021 budget, we're looking at, the next plan is to close during 2020, close TIF six, that will reduce the rate by 17 cents. Then going the future years after that, you see there's a little steam plant debt that will fall off by 2022. There's a proposed plan, right now closing TIF four and TIF nine, which reduces the rate a little bit further. But then the big drops are coming in 2028 and 2031, when all the steam plant debt is paid off. So in a nutshell, from a year ago to by the time we get to the end of this process, where all the steam plant debt is paid off and you've got five TIF districts closed, that rate in theory could close or could reduce the tax rate about $2.42. So I just want to leave that with a nutshell of, we're going in a positive direction. You have a lot of things going well here, a lot of economic development that's going to come back onto the tax roll. And the steam plant debt will get paid off a lot quicker than you think. And that is all I had.
Does anyone have any questions about what John had presented? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. This last slide is that with the levy remaining constant, slight note as slight increase?
This, this would be without factoring into what operational needs or what the state budget might impact on the city. This is purely on the stuff that we can control right now and that we're projecting going forward. Do I anticipate that the operating budget would go upward in future years and that the state might continue to hold revenues streams coming to the city? Yes. Could there be future reductions coming from the state? It's very well possible. They've done it before.
So this, on this slide is all things as they are today?
This is what we could project and we could control from what we know today. This does not factor in any increases in the tax rate having to go upward to maintain services or to offset reductions coming from the state in state funding.
Thank you.
Alderman Repella.
Thank you, Mayor. John, all of these tax reductions, does that also include the money that we're spending on the city garage?
That would be in addition, that would be something that would be added back in. So that this is one of the reasons with us closing these different TIF districts and the steam plant debt coming off, there would, it is making some room to bring the garage online. As you remember, we had talked about increasing or having a pretty standard flat borrowing of roughly about like 1.2 million each year. And that would be a projected increase of about five cents in the rate for debt service. That would make, that would allow room to absorb the garage facility and the borrowing. And keeping, if you stand on a trajectory, that's about a five cent increase in the debt service portion of the rate. You can do the public works facility garage. You can do about 1.2 million of additional borrowing going over a 20-year period and paying off the debt in 20 years. And, but this, the reason for this, that to even happen is because you've got these things coming down the pipeline of reductions that we know are going to happen or could very well happen.
But within that projection that was about this wide that we did it out?
Three pages.
That only included, did it include the TIF nine as well or was it just? Or TIF six? I forget which one.
I think we did go to, I'm trying to remember. I think we did go to nine, but we knew 12 was coming. We did not project 12 in there and I didn't even put it on the chart here.
And then these two on the bottom with the steam plant debt, those two were what, when those went away, would allow us to refinance the public works facility and pay it off sooner?
Yes. Because remember, we did have the conversation of having, issuing the USDA loan at 40 years. But with knowing those steam plant debt numbers are coming down the pipeline here in less than 10 years, we knew we could start accelerating the payoff on the public works facility in like within about 10 years, 12 years and possibly get it paid off in about 22 instead of 40. Yes.
Alderman Severnix.
These are just projections and hopes in some way. But also too, we have no idea. Who knows, five years from now, maybe interest rates start jumping. Or, as I explained in a meeting we had, other countries have negative interest rates. They actually pay you to take money. Where you don't even pay any interest. So it works the opposite way. And if you watch CNBC, they're talking about that all the time. I don't, I don't necessarily like it, but I mean, if you have money, you're not making no money in savings. That's for sure. But with that, there, a couple Aldermen had talked to me and they were concerned about the the cost and the 40 years of just one or two, James. He's harassing me, Mayor. Point of honor. That's okay. So.
We would like a written apology, please.
Yes, we'd like a written apology. But anyways, that's okay. I'm just joking. Just because we borrow for this and it's going to be over a 40-year period, we don't know what future councils are going to do or what future interest rates. I can't tell you how many times we've done reborrowing. So down the line, you know, this 40 years and these projections might be one thing, but over the next 40 years, that, that borrowing may be changed a half a dozen times. So, and hopefully for the better. And in most cases it is because that's why you refinance, so.
I think what we wanted to show you, Stan, was that we're thinking long-term and we're showing some scenarios. And you're right, it may not work out exactly that way, but long-term planning is important.
It gives us more comfort level in the direction that we're going.
Yes. One thing I did share with Alderman Taylor this afternoon was that the interest rate for the USDA loan, when we first went to start of this process, we were at four and a quarter. We're now down to 3%. I honestly God wish the building were up. Adam, Travis, I wish it were built because we could lock in three. But the problem is you lock it in at the time that the building is constructed and done and approved. Then it will, then we pay off the interim bank loan and then lock in the rate then. We know it won't be any higher than four and a quarter.
Alderman Repella.
Just, I'll be 101 and hopefully I'm still on the council.
Alderman Taylor.
And you got to think to the future a little bit. We're going to own a bridge and in the future, owning the bridge comes with tremendous costs. Credit catastrophic event, maintenance on it. We noticed that the bridges in Green Bay collapse under their own weight and the Nitschke Bridge has been down 36 times in the last 10 years. So along with this comes other things we got to think about in the future and very, very high cost items.
So what we have on the floor before us is resolution 25. And typically we would start with a motion to approve resolution 25. And then if someone would like to make motions to amend, we can do that as well. Alderman Severnix.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for R25, a resolution levying taxes for the purpose of paying and operating expenses for the year 2020 for the city of Manassas, introduced by the mayor.
There's a motion in a second by Alderman Kruger. Is, would anyone like to discuss or make amendments? And we can just take a vote if we don't want to go there? No? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I brought the subject of IT up at a workshop that we had recently and was prepared to ask more questions about it last Wednesday night. Unfortunately, we weren't able to have that meeting. The reason that I brought this question forward and was concerned about it was because Microsoft seven operating system will no longer be supported at beginning in mid-January. And so what that means was we needed to know what we have here that operates on that system because there will be no more security patches and it becomes operate at your own risk. And the risk is that we, because we provide services to the community, we hold lots of their personal information, whether it's a park and recs registration or a property record, a tax record, we have those things. And without security, they become vulnerable, very vulnerable to attacks by hackers. And local governments have been hacked around the country. And what happens is their computer locks up, they're held for ransom. And you either start working with pencil and paper or some communities have chosen to pay the ransom. And I didn't think Manassas wanted to risk going that route. So Director Jacobs, along with Kurt, went through an inventory of where we're at with operating systems. And also it occurred to me that we should probably look at laptops, iPads and also our email system that we use remotely to log into to check our emails. Because after checking Microsoft's webpage, that is expiring as well. And that's like a superhighway into the system. So Director Jacobs put together and Kurt, along with the help of the IT consultant, put together an inventory of all things that need to be updated. It includes 55 PCs, nine Chromebooks and tablets, 10 virtual servers. And that's about the gist of it. There were 17 funds that this needed to be distributed through, according to him. So we wanted to come up with the most acceptable and easiest to understand motion to get those things completed. And so, three funds will need additions to them. The general fund, I make a motion to add $8,710 to the general fund, $260 to the public works fund, and $650 to the IT fund for a total of $9,620.
I do have a paper document of this. If you'd like this distributed, based on Alderman Nichols request this out today. If that, you'd like that?
Let's hope Debbie get the motion.
I have a question about the motion though.
Is there a second?
I'll second for the sake of discussion.
Yes.
For the sake of discussion, I seconded Debbie. I don't understand why you're adding to the general fund. From what? From where? What are you adding to the general fund?
There's, there's 9,000, all of them get paid out of the IT fund. And then all funds, transfer funds into the IT fund to pay for that. So there's an allocation. And so after we went through an itemized by department, by fund of the 74 that are now scheduled for replacement next year, these, the 74 times the $130 for each Windows 10 license would be the equivalent of 9,620. So this would get paid out of the IT fund. So this would get paid out of the IT Fund. However, the funds, all departments and all funds of the city contribute towards that fund to pay for it.
Wouldn't it be easier just to take nine thousand from the general fund to pay this? Because the general fund is, what, how many million?
Eighteen million.
I think you're, she's adding to the tax levy, eight thousand seven hundred ten. You're asking, can we just take it out of the general fund?
Right, I mean, if it's that important, instead of scooping up with the levy and stuff, if, I mean, I don't think anyone disagrees with you. I agree with you that with this Windows seven, I had an old computer that was running terrible. I upgraded to Windows ten, and now it's a great computer all of a sudden. I was going to throw it away. So I don't disagree, I just, I just don't think we need to add anything, and that this is such a small amount, that maybe later down the road, we come in with some type of different change, that we take care of this issue. That we upgrade all of them to Windows ten, or better.
So I guess there's two ways that we could do this, John, correct? So let me ask you, there's a couple ways we could do this. One is to increase the tax levy for this year. Two is, there is a little bit of a reserve in the IT Fund right now, we could take it out of that. Three, I guess there's probably more than three ways, but the third way was.
There's all kinds of ways.
We could just increase the 2019 budget line item with some money that was not expended someplace else.
The IT Fund in 2019 could probably absorb the ninety-six twenty, because we have, we had the vacancy of the one position, so there's probably enough there to cover this and get this all done in nineteen.
I would rather do it that way. I don't think we need this motion. I support Alderman Nichols' concept of what she wants to accomplish, but I don't think we have to do it in this form, and that we should do it the way that the mayor suggested.
Option one, two, or three? You want to, you just want to increase the IT?
We don't, really, it's a policy, more of a policy decision, really, down the road. So I say we vote against this, and then we just, as a council, I'm looking at my colleagues, I think they're all agreeing that we want to upgrade this, and this is the best way of handling it. Do you have something more to add, Steve, to this?
Steve, if I can, it doesn't want to go.
I fully agree. I don't, I do not want to be messing with the levy at all. I think the levy is fine the way it is, if there's room within the IT budget for it. Otherwise, my other recommendation was going to be, if there wasn't any, you know, soft spot within the budget to be able to move the money over there, is we just lowered our borrowing for this budget, and we didn't, you know, we didn't mess around with that. If the worst came to worst, we could probably borrow the money, and we're still under, under the borrowing that we were going to do for the year anyhow. But I definitely do not want to mess with the levy, so if I. Yeah, so if it's within the IT budget, I'm all for that, yes.
So let me consult with the attorney here. Steve, John? So John, if we would, if we would amend the 2020 budget to include that within the IT Fund, the entire amount, would that allow you to take it out of the reserve if we did that?
It could come out of the entire, we do have a significant reserve amount in there, yes. It would not have to come and allocated across the departments if you chose to do that.
Would that be the way that you, how would you state the motion?
Likely wouldn't, we couldn't get this all done in the nineteen calendar year anyway, so if we want to amend anything, we could amend the 2020 budget to do it in the IT and not to be distributed and funded by the fund balance, the reserves.
The reason I want to do it tonight is because I believe that, well, I can't speak for you, Alderman Nichols, but I'm guessing that you may not be comfortable just hoping that it happens all by itself and without a vote. So if we would have a vote tonight to include it in the 2020 IT Budget, to be funded by IT budget, IT Fund reserves, or something to that effect, that would accomplish what you want to do. It would take a separate motion. We'd first have to vote this one down. Is there further discussion? Alderman Nichols, did you have anything else?
Not at this time. Other, well, if we're, if we have any hope of keeping track of these things, it would benefit everyone greatly to charge them accordingly to the departments. And so, it's my hope that if this gets done with IT Reserve Funds, that we maintain this record going forward, because I understand this was a lot of work to get together in a few hours. And so we need to track the information, and charging it through the departments is a way to do that.
We, with our present IT consultant, we do have a lot better tracking than we have with our previous consultants, so we have every, and Kurt and I went through this today several times with them, and we went and got this down to the, each PC, each laptop, each Chromebook. So we've got this down, so we know what the ones are that need to be switched out yet, of the ones that are not scheduled for total replacements in 2020.
Okay, so, right now, what's on the floor is to increase the budget to upgrade fifty-some pieces of equipment to Windows ten.
There are seventy-four in total.
Seventy-four, okay.
Yes.
So if we could have a roll call vote on that? Oops, except you, didn't you, I thought I saw you typing it.
I did, I just got to put it into this.
I looked up, and it wasn't the motion that I thought it was. This is an amendment. So this was the proposed amendment. Yes. So if we could have a roll call vote on that, please?
Motion fails on roll call three, five.
So did you wish to make another motion, Alderman Nichols?
So I'm thinking, what I heard was, my motion is to perform the operating system upgrades to seventy-four units. And to the virtual servers from the IT Reserve Fund. And I'd like to add that that, the PC work be completed by January thirteenth, 2020, and the virtual server work by October first. Twenty twenty.
There's a motion and a second? Is that timeline achievable?
It has to be, because that's when the updates run out. That's their expiration dates.
The virtual server is longer.
October.
Is that achievable?
We are still one person down in the department, but that new person will be starting on December ninth. So that would give that person and Kurt and our consultant roughly like about, I think, what, five weeks to complete that, with, when we have the new, we're back up to full staff.
What was the October date?
October first.
So you're saying, yes, but barely?
With the estimates that they gave us, they, the consultant thought probably in a couple weeks' time. If they're, if the person's here twice a week, and then we've got two full-time people in IT working on it.
So we have a motion on the floor. The attorney basically told me it's very unusual to put dates on things. I can understand why, but typically, the common council would not control the workload of a department, but knowing that these dates are the dates of the expiration of the service patches for that, I'll allow that to remain. So if we have no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote.
I do have one thing to add.
Oh, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing the dates. I understand that it would not normally be acceptable, but this is a really important, mission-critical piece of what we do here. And the reason I brought this forward as a levy item in the first place is because I believe we have a duty, just as we maintain the infrastructure that is underground with borrowing and tax levy funds, we have a duty to maintain these items as well. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call eight, zero.
We have had to introduce several new employees to the typewriter, and they looked at it like it was a foreign object, and had no clue what to do with it, so. So are there other amendments?
Thank you, Mayor, for the reminder. I have a concern. Does this, can we do things to change in the handbook?
No, that would be during the personnel committee.
Oh, that would be later.
Yes.
Oh.
But if.
Okay.
But if you're doing something to the personnel handbook that is going to increase the levy, you'd have to make the motion to increase the levy at this point.
I will make the motion. Okay. Here's what I'd like to do. Been taking a look at what's happening to Milwaukee and what's happening to Kewahana, and they are enticing, rewarding their city employees by two or by three percent of, to put into like their 401, 401K, to live into the, to live in the city. We already have a five thousand dollar payout if a city employee moves into the, builds a house and moves into the city, but I'd like to actually increase this and allow, I think we have eleven, let me get back there, we have, we have thirteen employees who are eligible for benefits that are living in the city with the resident incentive, as a percentage of their annual wage is paid into a retirement count. If we went and gave them three percent per year, that would be twenty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars, that that would increase our levy this upcoming year. Now, we could do it in different phases, one percent, two percent, three percent. If we did one percent this year, it would increase at seven thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars. So I'm just needing the, needing the council's advice, if they have a preference over one percent, two percent, or three percent, it could go as high as five percent to entice and reward the workers to live in the city of Manassas. That would cost us over thirty.
What is your point of order?
This is a policy, it's nothing to do with the budget, and this is something that should be, we discussed this already, and determining what type of rewards employees get, that's more of a policy.
Sure. So I guess what Alderman Repella's motion would be, would be to take X dollars and place it in a reserve fund to be used for a residency incentive, and then we could decide what that policy would be in the future, if you want to do it.
Fair enough.
That's much more clear.
Oh, thank you. I would like to take twenty-three thousand nine hundred twenty-seven dollars.
I don't know if you really want to take that precise of amount. You could take twenty-five thousand, twenty thousand, whatever.
Let's take twenty-five thousand and move it into, set it aside for residency and reward. We've got a hundred and, hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, John said we've got to, to.
So the motion is to increase the levy.
Yes.
By twenty-five thousand dollars to be placed in a fund to be used for an employee residency incentive.
That's excellent. Thank you, Mayor, for wording that correctly.
Is there a second? There needs to be a second first.
He made a motion.
I made a motion.
I heard the mayor make the motion.
I will make the motion then.
Is there a second? Okay, so the motion fails then for lack of a second? Okay, Alderman Sevena.
I don't disagree at all. I would have probably, if you had given me the chance to speak, would have been supportive of this incentive. I agree with Alderman Krueger, this is a policy decision that I think we should take very serious. I like the idea, I like the concept, Randy, it's a good idea. We can, at any point, that dollar amount, that, what was that, based on what, three percent?
Three percent, yes.
And that might be high for the start, and then we should create a policy first, move forward. We can always take money from somewhere in the budget, whether that's just from the general fund if we want, to fund this for 2020. And it doesn't have, and it could be retroactive as of January one, or something like that. So I would, I support what you're, what you're saying, what you're doing, I think we should do this. You've heard me talk up here a few times about it.
Just a few.
Just a few, so.
So we can talk about.
Sorry your motion didn't succeed, but I think maybe on the next agenda, you work with the mayor, or whoever else, and we'll make a policy, we'll bring it to Ted and Personnel, and we'll, let's discuss this. I think it's a good idea.
So we have a little bit of a chance to discuss it tonight as part of the handbook?
Right.
And we can get some direction from the council at that point, what they'd like us to bring back at the next meeting, then?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to echo in a little bit, and the stuff is kind of, usually when you have a budget and you have a workshop and you look at money, you look to cut. I'm kind of surprised right now, we're trying to add more money to this thing, and especially Alderman Repella. I mean, you were so far against the three percent wage increase, and you're so far against all this other additional costs, but you're willing, just to put twenty-five thousand dollars out there to individuals that kind of live here already, that are getting their three percent and doing certain things. So yes, there could be some creative ways of doing this and looking at it, I'm not completely opposed to it, but another thing, sure, you like to have people live in your city, but you can't force people where to live. And if they don't choose to come here, I understand that, and we have to understand that, because we go to other communities for dinner, for entertainment, for other things. It's not everything's done in Manassas, so. It's not everything's done in Menasha, so there's something that can be done here, but yeah, it just seems like you guys, you guys, some of you people up here are just trying to cut, 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 and then all of a sudden now, oh, let's add, add, add. So this is my two cents.
I see no other amendments? We have no other discussion? If we could have a motion? Oh, sure.
Although, in the past, this is the first time I have not made any cuts in the budget. But over time, I've realized that I will let the department heads bring things forward and they not ma, just because it's in the budget doesn't mean it succeeds. So we could always say no to a lot of these things. So that's the approach I'm going to take for two thousand and twenty. If certain things need to happen and you feel strongly about it, you're going to need to sell it, not just because it's in the budget. So I want that to be very clear, even to you, Mayor, that just because it's in the budget doesn't necessarily mean we're going to do it.
I'm not sure what that means.
I think everyone else does. That has been your policy. You think because we budgeted for it, that it has to be done.
Well, it doesn't.
Things can happen, things can change where we've decided, you know what, maybe we're going to take a different direction, maybe we'll do it in a different year, maybe we need to add money, maybe we need to subtract money, those kind of things. So otherwise, you want, I can spend the next two, three hours up here and I can make several cuts.
So what happens with the budget is unless there's direction.
They all look down.
There is direction from the council, we proceed as if you've agreed that these are
No, no.
items that you want.
I do not agree on everything that's in this budget.
Then why are we taxing for those others?
Because we are, we are supporting progress to move forward. Otherwise, let's go home tonight after the budget's done. That's why we're elected, to follow through, because, look, I'll, I'll give you an example. The parking lot out at Jefferson Park, that was budgeted, but we decided that the contracts came in too high.
True.
And then we weren't going to, we were, we weren't going to do the project.
That, that's fine, because there wasn't enough money in the budget.
And we weren't going to do a project at that budget dollar amount, so things change.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
Yes.
So down the road, some of these, there's going to be multiple items that come up over the years. Alderman Langdon brought up a great one. We're not always aware of what's going on in a bathroom somewhere, how bad something is, you know? He brought it to our attention, we're correcting that situation, that wasn't necessarily in the budget. So we're going to find things. There's always something that, that got damaged in the city or something that we're going to try to work and fix. So that, that's just my point, so.
We, we're on the same page. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to add and final to this, I mean, this council made the decision earlier this year to do the reassessments with the goal to lower the tax rate by quite a bit. And, and John came up and he was pretty much dead accurate on what was going to happen with those reassessments. And I think this is really great for the taxpayers that they're going to get a, this is a substantial relief on the tax rate for one year. And we were all told that starting next year is going to start creeping back up there because of various different things, for a few years it's going to drop back off. And I, I just want to say I'm really happy that this council is willing to keep the tax rate where it's at. And in fact, Alderman Langdon, you know, chopped a little bit off of the actual borrowing, which is also a very positive thing. So I'm very happy with the tax rate and I'm glad the council's willing to keep it exactly where it is, at least for this year, on behalf of the taxpayers. Thank you.
So I think to add to that comment, the tax levy is the same as the tax levy last year. Some people's tax bills are going to go up, some are going to go down, but the city is collecting the same amount. This was not, this reassessment did not allow us to collect more money, it just apportioned it differently throughout the city. I want to make that clear to everyone. Alderman Grady?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll echo some of what Alderman Kruger said too. I mean, John, with, with the assessments and what we did do here, and you look at our per thousand tax rate, it is going down, nine dollars and sixty-two cents or whatever, from what it was last year, over ten bucks. I do have, you know, I could go through, I got about forty thousand dollars worth of stuff, I could ask for cuts here, but I'm not going to bring that up, because I think the department heads know what they're doing, they, they budget wisely, you know, they're trying to squeeze, squeeze, you know, any penny they get. And this budget came in really, really nice, and, and I think it's going to help out the city. And so I'm not, like Alderman Sevenix said too, I know every year I'm up here, he always cuts, 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 so it's great, because that's the duty of us, that's why we're here. And I just not going to nickel and dime things when I think this is a very, very achievable goal here.
Seeing no one else? Alderman Taylor?
After looking at the different cities and seeing that Menasha leads the pack at three percent, I'm going to make a motion for a two-point-five pay increase for non-representative
We already made that motion at a previous meeting that's been decided.
Two-point-two-five, Mayor.
That has already been passed, we can only make that decision once per council. So we already made the decision as a council that we're at a three percent increase, and that's where we're going to be. You wanted to make a motion to have a two-point, two-five, two-point-five percent increase versus a three percent that was already decided at a previous meeting? So I would rule that as out of order?
I thought the budget hearings were for that, Mayor.
The budget hearings are not to re-decide things that we've already decided.
That's part of the, the whole impact of the budget.
Well, we could go on forever just making motions to undo motions that we did last week too. You don't do that.
This would be the time, it's not next week or the week after, you know, it's, this would be the time when we're paying the paper here.
So seeing no further discussion, let's take a roll call vote on the resolution.
Motion carried on, roll call seven one.
Okay, motion, item three is resolution twenty-six. It's a resolution adopting the General Special Reserve Capital Projects Debt Service Enterprise and Internal Service Funds and Component Unit twenty twenty budgets. Is there a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve Resolution R dash twenty-six dash nineteen, a resolution of the city of Menasha adopting its general special revenue capital projects debt service enterprise and internal service funds and component unit twenty twenty budget introduced by Mayor Marcus.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion? John?
Just to correct the bottom line number, with the two changes that were made, there was a reduction in the capital improvements fund on page two of that resolution that reduced that amount by twenty-two thousand three eighty-five. And then further down, the, the IT fund amount that says four oh two six thirty-seven, that was an addition of ninety-six twenty added. So the net change to the bottom line total should then be forty-nine million six oh seven six one one with those two changes. The nine thousand six twenty, that was for the licenses.
So I think we may have done that motion in the wrong spot.
Well, this, this is approving the grand total.
Okay.
What you did was separate lines, but no, that's fine.
So John gave you the corrected numbers based upon the other, other things that we have done this evening? Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
And the third resolution is resolution twenty-seven regarding the borrowing. Do we have a motion? Alderman Kruger?
If I could find the right button. I'll make the motion to approve Resolution R dash twenty-seven dash nineteen, a resolution authorizing twenty twenty general obligation borrowing and issuance of certificate of indebtedness and levying a tax in connection therewith, introduced by Mayor Marcus.
There's a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Oh, John?
Yep, two corrections, with the reduction in the fire funding, in the first paragraph, the borrowing amount should be changed to one million six oh three six ninety-one. And then in the la, the second to last paragraph, where it says now therefore be resolved, the total borrowing then for twenty twenty should be reduced to fifteen million one forty-one four four one. That includes the general obligation for the general capital improvements, includes the USDA loan for the amount for the new public works facility, and it includes the amount proposed for the developer projects of the two-point-eight million.
Okay, any further discussion? If we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
So item five is resolution twenty-eight, a resolution accepting the notice of public hearing, and I'm going to let the attorney explain what this is.
The redevelopment authority in considering whether to declare the property at four fifty-five Baldwin Street is holding a public hearing. And under the statutes, there are specific requirements for notifying the property owner, but since the city is the property owner, what was prepared is just this resolution accepting notice of the public hearing, rather than actually having to, you know, certified mail, return receipt, requested, that kind of stuff, because the city is the only owner.
Do we have a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve Resolution R dash twenty-eight dash nineteen, a resolution accepting notice of public hearing introduced by Mayor Marcus.
There's a motion and a second? Any further questions? No? If we could have a roll call vote then, please?
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Item L is appointments. There is a resignation and an appointment to the police commission? Is there a motion? I don't know who's, I think Tom was first. Alderman Grady?
Can I make this as one motion? Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to accept the resignation of Frances Evan from the police commission and the appointment of Nancy Ball to the police commission for the term of eleven eighteen nineteen through five one twenty-two.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Taylor. Any discussion? Do you have discussion, James? No? All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Item N is public comments in any matter listed on the agenda, and there is no public. Do we have a motion to recess to committee at this point? Recession? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Tom Grady? Any, all those in favor? We are at recess, thank you.